Call to order, the city council meeting.
For December 19th, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our roll.
Shower.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Kenny. Gustafson.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Six present and one absent.
We have a quorum, takes us to questions and comments and announcements of a general nature. We put this into our agenda a number of years ago. It gives residents an opportunity to come forward to speak to the council about anything that is non-agenda related and where they don't want to wait till the end of the meeting. Does anyone have anything they'd like to present? Okay. Takes us to approval of the minutes, first set of minutes of our goal-setting session, November 14th, 2022. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Shower. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Those minutes have been approved. Now we'll go to the city council minutes of November 21st, 2022. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Gustafson. Comments? If none, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Our minutes have been approved. We move on to the receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications they'd like to share? Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. I received another communication from Mel Gregory of the Carriageway West neighborhood about the fence along North Frontage Road that's obviously controlled by IDOT and several areas of which have been hit and repaired and not repaired and hit again. And I've brought it up with Dan Gombek again and just like if there's some other, potentially down the road, some other permanent solution, a more sturdy structure. I know it gets tricky with the curve, especially over by the Carmelite center because of, you know, it being, you know, you can't just put up a guardrail. It's a little tricky, but this has all happened, you know, continuously happened and we haven't even had the bad weather yet. So it just seems like it's a constant situation with IDOT. And I'd like to, maybe down the road, if we could have some type of sit-down with them, that would be great.
I think that's a good idea, Mary. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor. I received communication from Ken Petrowski about light on Walnut again. I think that's their light, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I'll communicate that to Ken.
I received, I've been getting the communications, Why I Love Darien. And I really enjoy getting those. One gentleman, and I kind of smiled to myself as I was reading it, because he listed restaurants and historic sites. I mean, he just, he had a whole paragraph of just all these different things he loved. It wasn't one thing. It was a whole number of things. And I'd like to share some of that with you because I really think that was kind of neat. But I've received about four or five of them already, and if you'd like, I could share them with you. But that's a nice activity is to...
Can you put them in a direct connect?
And we'll put them in the direct connect. So keep those Why I Love Darien emails coming back. Anyone else? Okay, that takes us to the mayor's report. First item is consideration of a motion to approve the appointment of Tom Papas as chairman up to the Economic Development Committee. As I mentioned, we lost our chairman to a full-time position with Downers Grove. And the committee nominated and voted to have Tom serve as their new chairperson. Could I have a motion to approve? Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
And Tom, you don't need to be sworn in because you're already on the committee. So we appreciate that. All right. The next item on our agenda, I'd like to read this. Tonight, I'd like to recognize a Darien resident who has brought recognition to our city through her participation in the Miss America Organization. Her name is Paige Hollanddonner, and she has been named Miss Northern Suburbs and will be vying for the title of Miss Illinois in June. Paige has been competing within the Miss America Organization since 2020 and has been awarded over $25,000 in scholarships, which she used to complete her BA in Political Science from Carthage College. Her main goal through this experience is to serve her community and spread her social impact initiative, Hear My Hands, which strives to teach others about the importance of American Sign Language. Paige is an example of an individual who is seeking ways of giving back to her community, and our Darien is a recipient of her fine efforts. On behalf of the City of Darien, its official staff and residents, I want to recognize Paige for her efforts. And I would like to personally thank her for her contributions to Darien and to other communities who will be impacted by her work. And Paige, would you please come forward and say a few words regarding your work on behalf of the hearing impaired through your efforts to promote the use of American Sign Language?
Thank you, Mayor Marquise, for having me here tonight. My name is Paige Hollanddonner. I am currently serving as Miss Northern Suburbs, which does include DuPage County. I'm really excited to begin this journey and continue my community service work here in Darien. Today, I actually had the opportunity to visit Mark Delaie Elementary School and teach the entire second grade about sign language and the opportunities that young women will have in the Miss America Organization. So I'm just very honored to be here, and I appreciate the recognition.
Paige, I need to get a picture with you, and I have something for you.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'm the photographer.
We want you to put this Darien pin on that nice...
I would love to.
So the whole world knows you're...
Sounds great, yeah.
All right.
Want to stand over here? Door won't reach your spot?
I think I'm going to need to crown me.
All right, I'm going to have to scoot back. She still likes to stand.
God save the king.
It's the season.
Wonderful.
Do you want to come forward?
She needs to carry him too.
Let us know how things go.
Yes, thank you. I'll be competing too.
She wants to take a picture.
Proud of you too.
When people ask, what's the fun part of being mayor? That's the fun part of being mayor. All right. It takes us to our recognition of our 2022 Holiday Home Decorating Contest winners. Mr. Warnicki and team, would you want to come forward, please? Bring the whole group up and introduce everybody.
Sure.
Tracy's got the board. You got Leslie?
Leslie couldn't make it tonight. She's scouting. Tracy and Liz, we went out on December 6th and had 29 nominees. And actually, this year, we had three block nominees. So it was getting a little challenged from my block. So that was good to see. But did you want to start the... We're going to start with honorable mentions first.
We'll start with the honorable mention.
You go ahead, Leslie.
And thank you for letting us be the representative of the city as a committee. Fabulous, fabulous stuff out there. The weather was mild up to now, and so people decorated. So our first honorable mention is, goes to Tony and Stacy Tantillo. There they are, back there. And they're at 7301 Bunker. Stacy tells me she's the designer and the planner behind this beautiful light display. And once the ID is established, Stacy sends her husband Tony and her daughter Deena up on the roof in the eaves to attach the lights. Stacy likes to use the blow molds to decorate her front yard. She's got penguins, bears, trees. All are placed across the property for a very nice balanced look. Tracy says she prefers the look of the incandescent lights for her display. They've lived at this house for 19 years, and thank you, Tantillo family, for sharing your display with the community. Is there... Yes. Got a certificate for you?
Can I even say their name? Tantillo?
Tantillo.
Good Greek family.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. And thank you.
I just want to say, the whole community actually benefits when folks like this go out of their way. We all enjoy it. Our next honorable mention is Ellen and Yolanta McNehey at 1614 Darien Club Drive. The McNehey family moved into this beautiful home back in 2019. There's two children, ages 10 and 11. I see them sitting in the back there. This is an extraordinary display. It's really a must-see if you're out driving in Darien. The front of the house is lined with lights. There's a colorful blend of gold figures, red and green and white lights. It sits on, kind of on a corner or a curve over there, and the backyard's visible with a blend of blue, purple, and green lights. Another reindeer was added this year. Ellen's the designer of the display, and Yolanta helps with the setup. It's a very artistic and well-balanced display. It looks just wonderful. And yet, while adults appreciate it, children would appreciate it too. So thank you, McNehey family, for sharing this display with all of us. You can come up and get your certificate. Thank you.
Good job.
Good.
The next house, the next house is located at 1921 McAdam. It is owned by Myrna Montefusco. The house has won fifth place in 2014, third place in 2015, second place in 2016. They're just underachievers. They have lived in Darien for 46 years. Myrna's son, Ron, has been doing the decorating of all these wins. The house is neat as a pin, with bushes and shrubs covered in lights decorated with a Santa placed right in the front of the yard with a number of beautiful white Christmas trees placed on the side of the corner lot. Ron, we are so happy that you're back decorating your house after the loss of your father two years ago. It's really incredible. You guys got to see this house. I don't think Ron's here tonight. Nope.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah. The next house is located at 53373rd Street. It is owned by Jim and Carrie Kaiser. They have lived in Darien for 29 years. They both love to decorate and have won third place in 97, second place in 2003, and honorable mention in 2021. Jim is also on the decorating committee, you may remember, for the last 10 years. Or next, yeah, two years ago, he just stopped. The property's on two-thirds of an acre, and the house and yard are completely outlined in colored lights. The front yard has a Merry Christmas carousel and lighted bells and numerous holiday blow-ups throughout the yard. The whole yard, I'm telling you, is visible from Plainfield Road. It just lights up. It's really pretty cool. And I don't think Jim can make it tonight. As you know, he's Governor Lyon Jim, and he had to go to another Lyon meeting tonight.
And our next honorable mention goes to Amy Coel at 7209 Richmond. Amy goes all out with her holiday display every year. She's lived at this address since 2008. She's completely filled her front yard with lights and blow-ups, including the characters Frozen, Santa, moving bears, moving squirrels, nativity set, reindeers, giant ornaments. Amy told me it takes her about 30 hours to get the display going, and once told me it took about 50 extension cords. The garage door opening is covered with a clear plastic, and there's an entire lighted Christmas town inside that fills about a third of the garage space. She started her decorating career with her dad way back. If you have children or grandchildren or something and you plan to make a trip, this is a good destination for the kids. My own grandchildren walk up and down the street a couple of times while I'm freezing there. But she's been providing this display for about nine years. Some people will decorate for a year or two. Amy's been doing it for nine years. And because of her tenacity and her extent, we also want to award her not only with an honorable mention, but with an honorary lifetime achievement award for being so generous in sharing your display with us every year. So please...
Thank you.
I love doing, I love doing this stuff.
It's really, it's really cool. I love going over there.
It's so fun to see everybody, kids and adults alike, that, you know, enjoy coming all the time. Halloween is when everybody's like, okay, is it going to open? Like, I just got home from work. Give me 30 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Congrats.
Amy did this this year despite opening her own restaurant, so that's a pretty good achievement. Moving into fifth place, fifth place is Ron and Kathy Needham at 7406 Richmond. The Needhams have lived at this address for 22 years. Ron's a designer, and Kathy and he work on the decorations together. When you get to the address, you can't help but notice there's lighted stars and arches over the sidewalk. And you can't miss a 10-foot snowman. Santa's in his sleigh, and he's, it looks like he's literally flying through thin air. I mean, you had to look twice to see how he was up there. Full team of reindeer. You can see the Grinch, a manger scene, and the tree-shaped lights out on the sidewalk, which Ron and Kathy said they'd hope visitors would come and take an opportunity to take some pictures on the sidewalk under the stars and the arches. Just another way that our Darien residents share with the community. So thank you, Needhams, for sharing this with us.
The next house is located at 7718 Sawyer Road. It is owned by Sheri and Pat Gillespie. Sheri has lived in Darien for the last 49 years and won fourth place in 2015, first place in 2018, honorable mention in 2019, and fifth place in 2021. Sheri's done a very nice job of tastefully, a tasteful variety of different light colors throughout her bushes and trees. And her entire roof of her house is green garland wrapped with white lights. Her entire yard has twinkling lights on the lawn and a juggling snowman and candy canes on both sides. The front door has a Matt playing Christmas trees, Christmas tunes, and a beautiful twinkling Christmas tree on both sides of the door. Sheri is the catalyst, really, for our Sawyer decorating block, and we have won five years in a row, basically because of her Christmas spirit. And I know Tom can attest to that because he gets a note every year. But I don't think Sheri could make it tonight.
Steve, you want to take this and give this to Sheri?
I can take that to her, sure. The next house is located at 7809 Farmingdale Drive. And I know from Tom's house, he can probably see it glowing in the sky.
Yeah.
Because it's owned by Brent and Gabby Walker. They have lived in Darien a little over two years. Brent has been decorating as long as he can remember. The house received an honorable mention previous year. Not bad for the first year in Darien. This year, Brent estimated he has hung 20,000 lights. And he has arches over the sidewalks. He has spent about 40 hours and God knows how many extension cords, that's for sure. The yard also features vintage reindeer, Santa and reindeer. He's hung in the air like the other house. At night, you can't even tell. And then Santa has a runway with lights around it, so it's really something to see. All the trees in Brent's yard are wrapped with bright lights. It almost looks like the Morton Arboreum, the way he's done the trees. And they're bright, they're so bright, you can see them from a block away. Brent took the time to decorate the side of the yard with a few thousand lights being on the corner. It really shows off nice, and it's certainly nice to see a new resident for Darien taking the time to decorate the job that Brent has done. And I don't think he made it tonight either, so I'm 0 for 4.
We can mail it, Joe.
If you mail it, you know what you want to do.
This next house is a first-time honoree. This house is located at 7702 Florence Avenue. Its owners are Joe and Kim Dombal. They have lived in Darien for 22 years. When I talked to Joe, he mentioned that Kim loves to decorate and does all the work outside. And when I found the nominations, when I got the nominations from Diane, I saw that Florence Block was nominated, so I had to drive over to see what the block looked like. And on my way over, I saw Kim outside in the front yard, kind of looking at her display, but it wasn't on yet. So on my way back, the lights were on, and I went, holy smokes. And I talked to Kim. I said, are you nominated? She didn't really know a lot about it. So I said, hey, I'm going to see if I can nominate you. And, well, it turns out she's going to be second place. This is an incredible display. The house being on the corner could really maximize all the decorations. And the really nice thing about this, it had a talking snowman, a singing snowman, and a singing tree. And they had wood plaques throughout the yard that I guess were made by someone's grandfather. But they're unique and very vintage plaques, and they're all lit up. And when you look at it closely, it was just amazing. And the other nice thing was that Kim said, or Joe said, that Kim, since Kim's been decorating, everybody on the block is starting to decorate. So going down the block from Kim's house on down, it's more decorated. So they were a good, they were a close second for nomination for the block, so we got to step it up next year. Anyway, so I'd like to congratulate Kim and Joe at 7702 Florence.
We'll mail it.
Our first-place winner this year is Matthew and Rebecca Haruska, and I don't see them here. 621 Maple Avenue. This is, this is a delightful display, and this is a young family in our community. They've lived at this address for seven years. They've got two children, ages six and three. And they've outlined the house, the eaves, the trees near the house, the parkway. Front yard is a busy place with the elves and wreaths and big snow slide. Lots of action, lots of moving. And now, as I passed it this evening, lots of, lots of music synced up with the lights and everything. The thing that amazes is the lighting is perfectly straight. And Matt told us that he's, he said, I'm a little OCD, and we... All right. Different types of lights blend well together. Overall, just an artistic idea with a lot of whimsy and attention to details. So congratulations to the Haruska family. And they're not, like I said, they're not here tonight, so... We'll take care of it.
Yeah, we'll mail.
We'll take care of it, Liz. Okay. Now, there were a lot of blocks that were, they just got to get one more light, one more house to light in a row. The block decorating award goes again to the 7600 to the 7800 block of Sawyer Road. It's delightful over there. And numerous houses decorated. And the thing that's, that's really nice about this is I think they've got a collaborative thing going over there. Starting with Sheri Gillespie, she goes out, and if somebody can't decorate or can't physically do it, I think people pitch in and do it. And thereby, neighbors meet neighbors, and that's important in a community. They work together. They build relationships. Congratulations to the residency of these blocks. You just need a minimum of five houses in a row, and some of you are really close.
Really close, yeah.
Really close, so get that one last person who's in the row that won't do it. But thank you again for letting us be your committee.
You guys have the poster? You made the board?
Yes.
Yeah, why don't we get a picture with the board open?
And make sure Tracy, full credit for doing this, because you got...
Tracy.
Trace, why don't we turn it around, let the audience hear?
So I can get you guys. Everyone who was, is here, you guys want to come up behind, look at a picture of the winners and special combinations? Come on up, okay?
I think that first place has been in my ward, and I think that's... That's worth two different ones.
I know we love that. Can we just keep in mind, too, that the bus runs, the bus tours will run tomorrow? Yeah, five, or 6:30 and 8:00, and you have to have a reservation. Pop right in there, guys.
Thank you.
So impressive. I'll be driving down Sawyer.
I don't know, I don't know yet. Their last day of school is tomorrow, right? Yeah. Are you? Thank you. Lucky for you. I'm still on the fence. I don't know if folks have things to do. It's, you know, the last school day.
They don't know that we're live, I don't think.
Yeah.
I don't think they realize we're live.
Okay, folks. We need to continue our meeting. What's that? Oh, yeah, good. Oh, no.
It's a party, Joe.
We've lost control.
You did.
I want to thank, I want to thank the committee for their hard work, and I want to thank all the residents who participated. I think somebody said it, maybe Liz said it, that when you decorate your home, everybody in Darien benefits because they get an opportunity to go past your house. Tomorrow night, we're going to have our trolley ride through, pass these homes. I believe the first trolley is going to be Eric.
I'll have it. It'd be 6:30. Make sure you call and sign up.
And I will be conducting the second trolley, which I believe is around 8 o'clock tomorrow.
Right.
So come to the... We're going to, we'll bring it upstairs. Thank you again to the committee, and thanks again to everybody who participated.
Joe, don't they put the addresses in the direct connect, too?
They do. Mm-hmm. They put a whole listing.
All right. I have just one more item under the mayor's report. Last Wednesday... He wanted me, she wanted me to come over and make sure her boyfriend left the house. And I said, that was, that was kind of unusual. But I enjoy these experiences. It was a lot of fun. And Hinsdale South High School is a great place, by the way. If you haven't seen the remodeling of the building, it's beautiful. It really is beautiful inside. So I would hope everybody has a chance sometime in the future to get a chance to see the building and meet the new principal, Dr. Hardy, who I think is a wonderful individual over there. So that's my mayor's report. It takes us to our city clerk's report. Joanne.
I have a couple of announcements. Darien City Offices will be closed on Friday, December 23rd, and Monday, December 26th, in observance of Christmas. The offices will also be closed on Monday, January 2nd, in observance of New Year's Day. The city council meeting that was scheduled for January 3rd has been canceled, and our next city council meeting will be held on Monday, January 16th. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. City Administrator's Report, Brian.
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Department had information questions, and I think both Dan and the chief have items. And we'll let Chief Thomas go first. Greg.
Go ahead, Greg.
Thanks for your permission, Dan. Been up here a few times now. This is probably fourth or fifth regarding the Safety Act. Original Safety Act, now there's been three trailer bills and maybe looking at some more to try to finish up some other issues. But some of the issues that I presented last time had to deal with public safety and really impacted the community, and a lot of things were done to try to correct some of those things. So in regards to cases or offenses that are eligible for detention, those have been expanded. It now includes all non-probationary felonies, forcible felonies, and other specified felonies. For example, reckless homicide, involuntary manslaughter, threatening a public official witness intimidation, aggravated DUI, DUI with great bodily harm, DUI with a death. Many of the drug offenses that involve an intent to deliver drugs, hate crimes, and any other felony that involves the threat of infliction of great bodily harm or permanent disability or disfigurement. So it expanded quite a number of those offenses for which somebody can be detained. Regarding the B/C misdemeanor, and this is the one that, where people could not be physically arrested or taken off of the property where they were trespassing, that has been amended. It clarifies that a police officer can arrest an individual for trespassing if the criminal activity persists after the issuance of a citation. So if an officer issues a citation, the person opts to remain on the property, the person can then be arrested. The way that the original act was written, they talked about B/C, petty business, and traffic violations, and it kind of left the Class A violations that were traffic-related, and those are like driving while license revoked, driving while license suspended, DUI and the like. Those have been clarified that they can, those individuals that commit those offenses can be arrested. The dangerous standard, again, when I tried to explain this last time, I kind of put it into three different categories, trying to decipher a lot what was being said and how it was being said in the legislation. So there was places in there that would have a dangerous standard, places that would have a willful flight standard and different types of things. No, one place that had a threat to the community standard. So they went through and corrected all those so that throughout the entire act, it talks about dangerousness standard. And then they also included a threat to the community, where only one level of crime could be a threat to the community. Warrants, last time I told you that a person misses court, they could not issue a warrant. They could only issue a civil summons. The legislation clarified that a judge can issue an arrest warrant when defendant has missed their court date. Willful flight, last time I read that statute to you, and I had, basically had to have a pre-plan for a flight leaving. That has been changed. The judge can now consider past non-appearancees, where before you, the judge could not do that. And then willful flight has been corrected in the terminology. Talked last time about electronic home monitoring, and a person could be away from the electronic home monitoring for 48 hours. It now removes the provision that made escape chargeable after 48 hours. So that has been changed. We talked last time about whether the act and the law was prospective or retroactive. Some of that has been clarified. Defendants charged before January 1 will be handled as they were prior to January 1, meaning that they still have to post their bond and do all those different types of things. The act, however, does give them an opportunity to, a hearing, but it has to be agreed to by the defendant and has to be provided to the judge or the hearing officer via motion by the defense. Defendants considered in custody on low-level offenses, those cases have to be heard within seven days. Defendants considered to be a flight risk must be heard within 60 days, and defendants considered to be a threat to safety within 90 days. So it's giving them an opportunity for a hearing, doesn't mean that they're going to be released. It's just the opportunity for that hearing. It addresses the issues of warrants that were issued prior to January 1. Those are going to continue to be bail. So if somebody had committed a crime and the judge had looked at the warrant and said that that requires a bond of $10,000, that person would still have to present that bail in order to get out of, get out of jail. So again, they made all those changes. We finally have that information as police in order to set a policy. So this higher-level look now has to be put into policy and procedure, and how to cite and release, and the forms that change, how to make an arrest and then release from custody if you're not going to detain, and then how to physically process somebody who is going to be arrested and detained or have conditions set on their bail, so, or not on bail, on their release. So overall, a lot of good things that have came to fruition in that, I think it was 308 pages of trailer bill. So if I have any questions, I'll do my best.
Have the trailer bills been signed by the governor?
Yes.
And is this, last time you spoke about Bob Berlin had ideas on what he wanted to do, is this, is he satisfied with this?
Yeah, I saw him on the 14th, and he was satisfied with a lot of the work that was done. In fact, he was the one that orchestrated most of it.
Sounds like it.
You do a good job.
Great.
Anyone else have a question for Greg?
Is there anything left that you would like to see changed?
Well, there's quite a few things that are left. Currently, a person that commits a crime of violating a bail bond, that used to be a criminal charge, now the person just gets brought back into court without a penalty. I think that that should be restored. There are some issues with the body-worn camera that should be restored or changed or altered or corrected. Some of it's just terminology within the legislature and what has actually done. I can't remember the terms in the act. I can't remember. But in reality, it's called flagging, so you know where or what you want to store versus just, you know, a regular interaction that without an arrest, it's going to be purged after 60 days versus something that's a piece of evidence. Less lethal, they did correct portions of that bill, but there's still some issues with less lethal. The training hours, I think need to have some, quite a bit of work done on those. The decertification process talks about anonymous complaints. We prefer confidential complaints. Constitution of the United States allows to know who your accusers are and believe that that should still be the process. You have an anonymous complaint, we can't go back to that person and get additional information or clarify anything. So there's some more work that needs to be done. But that first, second, and third trailer bill have now corrected a lot of issues.
Anything else for Chief Thomas?
Just quickly, when, last time you talked, you talked about State of New York's bill and the New Jersey bill. Are you saying we're more like the New Jersey, it's gone more towards what New Jersey was doing?
Correct. Yes, sir.
I believe the working group is still working.
That's my understanding as well, Mayor.
It's my understanding as well, and the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus is looking at formulating a working group made up of mayors who would make recommendations for additional changes. So while a lot of the anxiety that a lot of people felt as a result of the Safety Act has been allayed, there's still other work that needs to be done. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Conback?
That's all I have for you this evening, is we have a pretty major storm coming up within the next several days, more so Thursday, Friday. So just want to remind residents, you know, please don't shovel the snow into the roadways. It just creates another hazard from it icing up. We will make every accommodation as possible to make sure that we do not put snow on your driveway. But unfortunately, with what they're predicting, please expect the snow at your driveway. Second of all, sidewalks, corners, if we do get a predictable snow, as they're saying, we will be out taking down corners after it stops snowing. So when I say take them down, we'll make sure that they're all for vehicular traffic, that there's a sight distance and there's no problem. Also, for children at school bus routes, we'll make sure that those corners are also plowed. Again, maybe it won't snow, maybe it'll just be a flurry, or we'll have 20 inches. We've got one of three, so. But anyway, would you like me to do the vehicle purchase?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
One other, one quick thing before we move on. I just also want to encourage people to make sure they clear away by the fire hydrant.
Correct. If you could help us out, sure, if you could help us out, you know, please clear out around your fire hydrant while the fire department will also be out. Your help would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Marcusson. In regards to a truck purchase, we have another truck purchase, again, that we're requesting city council approval of. On July 28th, earlier this year, one of our vehicles was rear-ended on Plainfield Road. Due to the impact, the vehicle was a total loss. We recently had an opportunity to secure a vehicle. It is, it is an Antioch Raymond Chevrolet, and they have agreed to hold it for a week. The new truck is a 2022 Chevy, Chevy 3500, four by four. And the total cost with lighting will be approximately $76,799 with insurance. There was a reimbursement from reinsurance, so the net on it is basically $59,257. The vehicle lighting that you have in front of your dais tonight is in regard, it's an estimate, will have better, a solid number from the lighting manufacturer. So we'll be bringing that, unless there's no objections, we'll be bringing it back for formal consideration next month. But again, we want to secure the vehicle. It's been a very difficult time securing vehicles lately. Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions for Dan? Thank you. It takes us to our treasurer's report. We have two warrants and a monthly report. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'm requesting council's approval for warrant number 222315 in the amount of $530,151.19 from the listed funds and payroll, and the amount of $394,091.93 for a total to be approved of $924,243.12.
Motion to approve. Alderman Schauer, second by Alderman Vaughn. Questions or comments? None, the roll.
Schauer.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Warrant's been approved. The next warrant, Mike?
Okay, warrant number 222316, requesting council's approval in the amount of $488,635.57 from the listed funds, payroll for the period ended December 15th, and the amount of $259,548.1 for a total to be approved of $748,183.58.
Motion to approve. Alderman Sullivan, second by Alderman Gustafson. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Schauer.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
That warrant's been approved. Takes us to our monthly report. Mike?
Okay, revenue and expenditure report for the seven months ended November 30th reflect general fund year-to-date revenue of $12,452,747, expenses of $8,339,436, current balance of $7,012,246. Water fund year-to-date revenue of $4,066,538, expenses of $4,118,880, current balance of Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue $781,160, expenses of $363,645, current balance of $1,355,549. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue $28,343, expenses $1,793,876, current balance And the capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue of $1,792,693, expenses of $3,563,640, for a current balance of $13,902,483.
Any questions for Mike on the monthly report? If none, then we move to standing committee reports. Do any of the Aldermen have committee reports? Alderman, Belzak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Municipal Services Committee had their December meeting today, at which time we approved the November 28 minutes. Our January Municipal Services meeting will be on January 23rd at 6:00 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Cuddy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Police Committee meeting met this evening, and we submitted meetings, minutes for June and July. Our next meeting is, excuse me here, 16th of January, 6:30 PM across the street in a police training room, pending agenda items. I'm sorry for the departure this afternoon.
Mary?
Thank you. The January, first Monday in January meeting has been canceled, so the next Administrative Finance meeting will be held on Monday, February 6th. The next Economic Development Committee is meeting, not the first Thursday, but the second Thursday in January, January 12th at 7:00 PM in council chambers. And the City of Darien 2024 Budget Committee of a Whole that will start on Wednesday, February 22nd. Budget package will be distributed to the city council by February 14th. And then we will proceed to meet every week following until we have the budget finished and have it ready.
If none, then we move to standing committee reports. Do any of the Aldermen have committee reports? Alderman, Belzak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The municipal services committee uh, had their December meeting today, at which time we approved the November twenty eighth minutes. Our January uh, municipal services meeting will be on January the twenty third at six P M. in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the police committee meeting met this evening, and we submitted meetings, minutes for June and um, July. Our next meeting is, excuse me here, um, sixteenth of January, six thirty P M. across the street in a police training room, pending agenda items. I'm sorry for the departure this after this evening.
Mary?
Thank you. The January, uh, first Monday in January meeting has been canceled, so the next administrative finance meeting will be held on Monday, February sixth. The next economic development committee is meeting, um, not the first Thursday, but the second Thursday in January, January twelfth at seven P M. in council chambers. And the um, City of Darien, um, twenty twenty four budget, um, committee of a whole that will start on Wednesday, February twenty second. Budget um, package will be distributed to the city council by February fourteenth. And then we will proceed to meet every week following until we have the budget finished and have it ready to be um, sent to city council for approval in April.
Thank you very much. That takes us to questions and comments, agenda related. Anybody in the audience have any questions regarding any of our agenda items? If none, uh, we move to old business. There being none, we move to the consent agenda. The first few items are all deal with an ordinance. I'll read the statement only once, then I'm going to read the majority of the statement. Consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the City of Darien. Item B, an ordinance granting a special use amendment and variation from the Darien zoning ordinance, eighty four thirty one Wilmett Avenue. Item C, an ordinance granting a special use amendment and variation from the Darien sign code for Frye the Coop, twenty nineteen, Seventy Fifth Street. Uh, item D, uh, an ordinance approving a variation from the Darien zoning ordinance, thirty four eighty Drover Lane. The following are resolutions. I'll read the resolution statement once. Consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from H and H Electric Company in the amount of two hundred sixty four thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars and thirty seven cents for the Clardon Hills Road and Sixty Seventh Street traffic signal project. Prove a contingent, uh, item F, approve a contingency in the amount of fifteen thousand for unforeseen utility conflicts as field identified regarding Clardon Hills Road and Sixty Seventh Street traffic light uh, project. Item G, a proposal from Orange Crush LLC for betumus products as required for various public works projects at the specified unit pricing. Item H, a proposal from M and J Asphalt Paving Incorporated for the removal and replacement of betuminous apron and road patches at the proposed unit pricing as required for various public works projects for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item uh, I, a proposal from one hundred and ninth Street Materials for tipping and transfer fees at the proposed unit prices for certain generated waste from various for public works projects. Item J, uh, a proposal from X B E L L C. to provide trucking services relating to hauling waste generated from excavations for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item K, a proposal from Core and Main for culvert metal pipes, metal bands, metal flare end sections and fittings as required for various public works projects for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item L, a proposal from Core and Main for high density polyethylene pipes, bands, flare end sections and fittings at the proposed unit prices for various public works projects for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item M, a proposal from EJ USA Incorporated for storm sewer structures, iron sewer grates, concrete adjusting rings at the proposed unit prices for various public works projects for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item N, a proposal from Norwalk Tank Company for storm sewer structures, iron sewer grates, concrete adjusting rings at the proposed unit prices for various public works projects for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item O, proposal from Core and Main for pressure pipe as required for various public works projects at the proposed unit price for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item P, purchase of one new twenty twenty one Ford F four fifty four by four from Willa Burke Ford in the amount of eighty two thousand, six hundred and seventy two dollars. Item Q, a proposal from Monroe Truck Equipment for the purchase of a dump body and snowplow equipment package, lighting accessories and hydraulic controls for the twenty twenty one Ford X fifty four by four in an amount not to exceed forty two thousand, ten dollars. R, proposal from Z Bell Water Service Products Incorporated for Smith and Blair stainless steel water main repair clamps, style two two six with stainless steel bolts for the maintenance of the water system at a proposed unit price for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item F S, proposal from Z Bell Water Service Products for Smith and Blair stainless steel water main repair clamps, style two thirty eight with stainless steel bolts at the proposed unit prices and various sizes for the maintenance of the water system for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item T, proposal from Core and Main for type K copper pipe for the maintenance of the water system for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item U, proposal from Underground Pipe and Valve Company for Mueller brand brass fitting at the proposed unit prices for the maintenance of the water system for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item V, a proposal from Core and Main for various water valves for maintenance of the water system at the proposed unit price for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item W, a proposal from, uh, seems like I just read that one. Maine and uh, Core and Maine for Mueller Super Centurion Fire Hydrants and auxiliary valves for the maintenance of the water system as required for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item X, a proposal from EJ USA Incorporated for East Jordan C D two fifty Fire Hydrants, Valves and Accessories at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item Y, proposal from Core and Main from Water Pacer Fire Hydrants, Auxiliary Valves and Accessories at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item Z, a proposal from Underground Pipe and Valve Company for Cloud Medallion Fire Hydrants, Auxiliary Valves and Accessories at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. A A, a proposal from Underground Pipe and Valve Company for the Cloud Eddie Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at a proposed unit price as required for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item B B, a proposal from Underground Pipe and Valve Company for the Cloud Medallion Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item C C, a proposal from Z Bell Water Services Products Incorporated for the Traverse City Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item D D, a proposal from EJ USA Incorporated for the East Jordan Water Master S B R two fifty and the Water Master five C D two fifty Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item E E, a proposal from Z Bell Water Service Products Incorporated for the Water Pacer Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. F F, a proposal from Z Bell Water Services Products Incorporated for the Mueller Super Centurion Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item G G, a proposal from Core and Main for US Pipe Fire Hydrant Repair Parts as required for a period of May first, twenty twenty three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Item H H, a proposal from M and M Home Remodeling Services for the material installation of the liquid applied elastronomic roofing material system for a re-roof project at the public works facility, ten forty one South Frontage Road in an amount not to exceed fifty one thousand, five hundred dollars. And item I I, a contingency in the amount of five thousand for unforeseen repairs related to the roof refurbishment. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Gustafson. And the roll.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The consent agenda's been approved. Takes us to new business. Our first item is consideration of a motion approving the part-time position of business liaison and recruitment coordinator and authorizing the city administrator to hire for that position. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderwoman Sullivan. End discussion. Mary?
I just think this is something that has come up, you know, several goal setting sessions. It's clearly, you know, the direction we need to go in um, from the city, from um, you know, business outreach and new business recruitment. And um, we've had a great um, you know, startup with the Economic Development Committee. Um, and I think this will only um, be a better partnership with them and um, work with Dan Gombek and his team um, to continue the fine work he's done. But to have a dedicated resource, um, I think we will reap many rewards.
Thank you. Anyone else? If none, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Clistic.
Nay.
Belzak.
Aye.
Six ayes and one nay.
Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of fifteen tasers at sixty six thousand, eighty two dollars and eighty three cents for five years, thirty four body worn cameras, one hundred ninety six thousand, nine hundred seventy dollars and sixty cents for five years, and twelve in car cameras, one hundred and fifteen thousand, three dollars and twenty cents in a total of amount of three hundred and seventy seven dollars, nine hundred and ninety, three hundred and seventy seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety three dollars and sixty three cents. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Any questions or comments?
Mayor, can the chief explain again how some of the funding for this is not coming out of the city budget, but out of another?
Right. Certainly. The uh, purchase of the tasers, that is a item that we already own, and so we're just upgrading. So uh, that'll be purchased out of the city budget for the first year. It's already in the budget, the current budget, and then we'll just, um, as the fiscal year come along, we'll uh, continue the budget. I forget what it was, eleven thousand or whatever that math divides out into. The uh, body worn cameras at one hundred ninety six thousand, um, that is going to be purchased out of equitable sharing funds. It's the task force funds. There's also a grant that's uh, available, fifty percent for equipment and up to two thousand dollars a device. So uh, we're um, put in for that uh, grant. It was just announced like last Thursday or Friday, and I think we have like twenty some days to get it done, but it'll be done. And then we'll just wait to see if it's awarded. Irma, the um, insurance group, they offer a ten thousand dollar reimbursement grant. We have to purchase it and um, make our first payment before we're able to even ask for that uh, grant and whether or not we get it, don't know. And then the in car cameras, those will be also out of uh, regular budgeted item. Those items are backordered ten to twelve months, so it won't uh, come in until fiscal year twenty twenty four budget.
Eric?
I, I, I had, I'd laugh. I saw that uh, this week in the news that Birmingham, Alabama is now live streaming their uh, body cams. Is this something you're going to do here in Darien?
Absolutely not. I think it's ridiculous that you would put uh, that on uh, livestream, stream. I'll, uh, I can tell you any number of stories. I was a new officer and uh, well, fairly knew I was an officer, and there was an armed robbery that occurred involving a sawed off shotgun. We made a felony stop on the vehicle. And uh, while we're ordering the person out, somebody came up and asked if we were filming a movie uh, during this uh, issue. And in fact, we did uh, get the sawed off shotgun and another handgun off of the two people that were in the vehicle. To run it real time uh, is a very bad decision.
And the other thing I noticed too, like I say, City Chicago, they're now encrypting the police calls, so people can no longer listen on the scanners and stuff and listen to police calls.
Well, that's um, true and not true. So uh, in the past, you had analog and you could listen to um, analog uh, radio transmissions because it was available. Several years ago, I know uh, in Aurora, we went in uh, twenty ten to uh, digital radio, and at that time, there was not, was not the ability to listen in because the technology wasn't available to the public. Or that timeframe has now become available to the public. And so um, uh, now there's a decision about whether to encrypt or encrypt or not to encrypt. And uh, so our radio system, we are on a consortium with uh, uh, the ETSB and DUCOM, so all of DuPage uh, County is on that same radio system. And there's been a decision to encrypt most of those radios. I don't believe all of them are going to be encrypted. Chicago also um, opted to encrypt, I think before that, they were um, had a delay of about twenty minutes on their uh, system. You know, kind of torn between transparency, which I think is very appropriate, and uh, information being out there. There's information that's transmitted over the radio regarding HIPAA rule, information that would be transmitted uh, during uh, medical and emergencies, mental health emergencies, ADA information that could possibly be transferred. There's a whole issue with um, CGS Criminal Justice Information Systems where you um, you transmit certain pieces of information um, that is uh, should not be public, um, but we have to in order to communicate with uh, people. So there's a lot of issues that need to be resolved before you start uh, encrypting and or not encrypting and um, being transparent and not transparent.
Cause I grew up in Joliet, my mother, when I used to listen to the police scanner all the time. And the day after I got my driver's license, I got pulled over for speeding. The police officer let me off with a warning when I walked in, at home, walked inside the house. The scanner's going and my mother just gives me this look. And it's like, well, I guess I didn't get the car for quite a while after that.
My dad was an avid listener to uh, the radio as well and knew most of my calls when uh, I would go visit, so yes.
Back in my day, Eric, it was the lady down the street who called my mother to let her off.
My, my, my mom was that lady.
Any other questions on this? If none, the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, Tim.
Real quick, what is the life expectancy on the items we're purchasing?
They're warranted for five years. And then um, like the um, in car cameras, sorry, we get a um, a renewal after the five years. So the body worn cameras, uh, I believe there's a renewal at the two and a half year mark. And then the tasers are brand new technology, so it's probably going to be the full five years.
Anything else? Okay, now we can have the roll.
Belzak.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Uh, motion's been approved. Consideration of a motion approving a four-year proposal for auditing services from Sickage. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Gustafson. Any questions or comments? I think Mike mentioned before that uh, we received two bids. This was the better of the two bids.
Yes, this is the least expensive of the two bids. It's also our current auditor, who we had no, no issues with. They've been performing admirable service for us, so I highly recommend them.
Okay. Any other questions? If none, the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Uh, motion's been approved. Takes us to questions, comments and announcements of a general nature. I'd like to start out by saying uh, I want to thank all of you for your service on the city council this year. It's been a pleasure working with this council. Uh, I want to wish all of you the best holiday season, despite the eighteen inches of snow or the three. inches of snow, or just the few snowflakes that Dan described. I want to wish our residents the best of holidays and just ask them to be safe out there if we do get hit by one of these snowstorms. Anything else? Anybody else like to add? Eric?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I mentioned this last time, encourage people to, you know, Fry the Coop is now open. You just limited spill?
Yeah, it's limited. Two days after Saturday.
Okay. So I encourage people to go. My wife and I went over there and had a chicken sandwich, excellent sandwich. So I encourage people to get over there and give it a try.
By the way, the other day when I was over at Hinsdale South High School, I was with sophomores, juniors, and seniors in those civics classes. And I mentioned that you were looking for help. And I told, I told them what you were, and I had three or four young ladies who, oh, and they wrote down everything. And hopefully they went in and they applied for a job.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Mary?
Yes, just a friendly reminder that the citizen of the year nominations are open until January 3rd. So I know the holidays are busy, but there's still time to nominate a standout person in Darien. And I encourage you to do so. The committee does not seek out individuals. Someone has to be nominated by another individual in order to be eligible to receive the award. So January 3rd, all those forms and information can be found on the city website. And the citizen of the year banquet is scheduled for Friday, March 3rd at Alpine Banquets. And then Carrie the Musical, the Hinsdale South Musical from this fall, has been awarded the honor of going to the All-State Theater Festival in January. So that's a very big deal. It's like going to state for basketball or football. So they will be doing an encore performance prior to going down to the University of Illinois. And that will take place on January 11th at 7:00 PM in the brand new Hinsdale South Theater. So I encourage you to attend that. I think it'll be an amazing show. And yeah, I just wanted to say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, blessed holidays, no matter what you celebrate, or just being with family and be safe and enjoy the season.
From what I understand too, Alderman Kennedy's, Kenny is being heavily recruited by the Darien Fine Arts Council to perform and working.
So I miss half this meeting tonight. I don't have, my man, I don't have time. I'm honored and I'm flattered by it, but I just don't have the time.
Anything else anybody'd like to share? Happy holidays, everybody. Motion to adjourn? Alderman Schauer, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
Joe, take care.